Mayor Scoop?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall? Oh, he is absent this evening, that's correct. And Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Deanne. Okay, we'll move on to the presentation. Watershed Plan Report. John?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. This is, I'm presenting basically on behalf of the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition. Recently completed a nice light volume report here, about 170 pages, we call them, a watershed plan. But I have condensed it somewhat, my presentation from this, so don't worry. So the Coalition, just by means of introduction for those who may be watching at home, Coalition is the group that was established in 2006. Prescott Valley was a charter member along with Prescott, Prescott Valley, Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, Yavapai County, and the Yavapai-Prescott Indian Tribal members. And the purpose is to protect the flows of the Upper Verde River and to reach safe yield in the Prescott AMA. Back in 2012, the Coalition Board set us forward on an initiative to address the watersheds as a whole. And soon after that, we received a U.S. Bureau of Reclamation grant to pay for the cost of developing this report and the plan. We did that with the work of what we call the Watershed Task Force, as a group of professionals who understand watershed conditions, health, and all that. So just so we know what we're talking about, we're talking about the Prescott Active Management Area watershed and the Big Chino watershed area. Prescott Valley's down in the bottom corner of that, going all the way up above I-40 and Sligman and all that. So the biggest issue we're trying to address here is the fact that within that watershed area, we do receive a good amount of precipitation, about 2.2 million acre-feet of precipitation lands on there in the average year. To give that some perspective, the town of Prescott Valley pumps about 5,000 acre-feet. So that's a lot of water that falls on the watershed. But only about 2% of the total is actual recharge into our aquifers, the water source that we rely on. The rest of it is runoff, but primarily, most of it is consumed by plants and evaporates from soil surface. So we want to try to get some of that water into the aquifer before it's lost to the sky. That's the basic thing we're trying to address. So the plan, after a couple of years of effort, we came up with four plan elements. One's to deal with vegetation management. The other one is to increase infiltration during wet times and perhaps take advantage of water we get from urbanization, more hardscape surfaces, and aquifer protection. So addressing the first one, vegetation management, kind of has three elements that go along with it. Of course, first, we want to treat the forests and encroached areas from this woody species that has invaded over the grasslands and has created a situation where we have not only increased fire danger, but more uptake of the water that we receive. To address that, we want to develop some markets for this woody material. We want to see that we get some sort of hydrologic benefit. We want to prove that we're going to get some sort of hydrologic benefit from doing this work, both on a large scale and on the small scale. To address that, we've been out developing projects and trying to raise money. And I guess the biggest news is that for vegetation management, we have received an award, Noticeable Award, of a $1 million grant to work on that. And so that'll treat somewhere between 5,000, 6,000 acres of woodland. So that's a pretty big deal. We have a, we've been collective, I guess, the state forester has received a grant to work on, trying to turn that woody material into something beneficial, something that might have some value, in what's called the State Wood Energy Team. So the state forester has that grant to pay for some smaller projects, and we're a member of that task force.
John, let me ask you a question. I was at an economic development meeting up in Flagstaff today, and there's a new company that's came into Williams, creating quite a large compost company. Would any of this material ever relate, could be treated and go into compost?
It is possible, and we've just started talking with that company to see if they're interested in this product. So we'll see how that pans out. As far as getting some of the hydrologic monitoring work done, we have applied for a grant for the large-scale stuff, and we're working on developing a research plan for the smaller-scale watershed study, which is, if you think of it in a way, it's more of a laboratory-conditioned watershed study. And we have a student intern that is working with us here in Prescott Valley, who is developing that research proposal. When we turn to infiltration enhancement, there are three main project areas there. One is induced recharge, gabions and washes to slow down the flow of water and spread it out so that it can infiltrate the ground better. And then another smaller idea to deal with primarily people that have their own well, perhaps to get rainwater that they can collect from their rooftop rather than use it on vegetation outside, but recharge it directly to the aquifer and benefit their well. So with the induced recharge, we're actively working on that. We've identified a grant source, funding source for that. That's a joint project with the Prescott Active Management Area Groundwater Users Advisory With the gabions, we've applied for a grant to build two gabion sites with about 11 structures in each site and to monitor it, to prove that we've had some positive benefit. That grant has been submitted, and we'll find out in June. And we're still looking for grant money. We think we found a source, but we're still working on that for the small-scale rainwater collection system. Water from urbanization, here we're talking about, again, developing some sort of benefit from water we get from additional runoff on hardscapes, parking lots, rooftops, and that sort of thing. The primary project we're working on here is Slaughterhouse-Gaults, which incorporates the Frontier Village Mall, Lowe's, Home Improvement Center, and that area by Prescott and on the, you have a by Prescott Indian Tribal land. You see down in the lower-left corner, you have what we call Lowe's Hill, which is the hill that they scarified to create fill material for the store site. So there are a lot of things that could be done within this watershed area to create some enhanced repairing area on the tribal lands, reducing flood flow. If you recall, last summer, we had an outage on Highway 69 where a culvert was overwhelmed by floodwater, and that was right in this area, in this watershed. Increasing recharge and improving water quality downstream of here is the Watson Woods and Watson Lake, which will benefit from better water quality. So there's money available through the watershed, I'm sorry, the Arizona Water Protection Fund, and we're developing the elements of this grant and the project to apply for that grant. And finally, I thought I'd just address aquifer protection, the last element, which we have a long ways to go on in some regards. Now, there was an editorial in the paper this week that levied the charge that we have no water management plan. But of course, nothing is further from the truth. Here in the Prescott Active Management Area, we've been under very stiff guidance of a watershed management plan since 1980. We've had no new subdivisions been allowed on groundwater since 1999, no new agricultural, irrigated agriculture since 1980, conservation requirements, reporting requirements, and every decade, we get a new management plan, foist it on us, and how we get closer to safe yield. And is it working? Well, we have a report from the Arizona Department of Water Resources that says it is. We're getting closer to that goal. We have a long ways to go, but we are getting closer. And we're seeing that groundwater levels are not falling as rapidly as they used to. They're still falling, but only at a rate of about a half of a foot per year compared to closer to two feet per year in the decade prior to 2003. So we're seeing some improvements. So we, and I bring that up as a case study of what aquifer protection plans might look like. So in the Big Chino, we don't have much of anything, except for the ranch property that Prescott and Prescott Valley own out there. Our Active Management Area rules follow us out to water use on that ranch. But some options out there include things like purchase of development rights, state land reform, low-impact development, and grandfathering water rights. As far as this goes, we have been working at how we can deal with some of the state land issues. In this case, state land has some real strict issues on removing vegetation from state lands. Costs a lot of extra money to do that. And I just wanted to bring out that aquifer protections are a project that are listed in the agreement in principle that Prescott Valley and Salt River Project signed back in 2010. So it's something that we're probably going to be doing at some point in time. So I guess with that, I do have hard copies, if you would like them. If you would rather just access it on the web, that's the website address. So if you have questions, I guess now's the time to shoot. And if you'd like a hard copy, raise your hand.
Questions, anybody? Mike?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. You, and I assume what you're talking about in terms of the $1 million, thank you, grant that we received for, I think it's removal of vegetation, is that correct?
That is correct, Councilman.
I'm sorry?
Yes, that is correct. A million dollars to remove vegetation.
And what would that look like? Would it be similar to the slide we saw relative to up near the area that you said is a focus for, you know, like Lowe's and Frontier Village?
Yeah, I think the area that we have selected for that is a really important resource area in the Big Chino. It's really in the foothills of the Juniper and Santa Maria Mountains, where vegetation has grown overly dense, and it has encroached out onto the grassland where it never existed before.
Okay, right.
So it would focus on that area. That's a key recharge driver for the Big Chino aquifer.
And I was wondering if you could define a little more, because you had mentioned that there's been really no new developments since 1999 that would impact on the water resources.
Well, since 1999, there have been no new developments permitted. Of course, we've had growth on the developments that were permitted back in 1999. So those empty lots are still being built upon. So since that point in time, no new developments are allowed based off the groundwater supply in the aquifer.
Oh, I got you.
They can come up with new sources such as effluent or something else.
Right, okay. Now I understand. Thank you.
Mary, you had a question?
No, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you, John. Anything else, or is that it?
That's all I know.
Okay. And Mayor and Council, if you would find it useful to go out on a field trip, I think that we would possibly be able to enlist the help of the Forest Service, and very close. There was some vegetation removal up by the power line off of 89A, and then there could be the possibility of going up on top of the mountain, and you could see an area that's been thinned in the forest, just not far off of the highway, versus areas that have not been thinned. And if that would be useful at all, you know, think about that, and we could arrange something like that.
Council, any thoughts on that?
Absolutely.
Laura?
No.
Mike says yes. Marty? Mary?
Yep.
Everyone?
We might want to wait till the weather is a little more predictable and warmer and go from there, although today's an anomaly.
Okay, let's plan on it there. Larry?
Don't go away, John.
Another question?
No, I want to ask you to inform us the significance of the partnership between Fish and Game and us for that grant, because that's pretty unique, and I want to make sure that they here understand and our citizens watching understand how important that is.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, the grant, as we applied for it, we applied for it as a secondary to the Arizona Game and Fish, so they're the primary grantee on that. The total amount of the grant was $1.5 million, with them receiving $1.5 million for what they call the Central Arizona Grassland Conservation Strategy. The Game and Fish is focusing on ways to improve the habitat for pronghorn, dealing with fencing, splitting up their range, and vegetation encroachment. You know, pronghorns don't do well with trees around. And so it parallels nicely with what we're trying to do. We have a more specified area where we're working on than they do. Their area encompasses three counties. So this is a true partnership with them and the NRCS, who will be guiding essentially the management of the vegetation removal as it goes through, and they're experts in this.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Keep up the good work, John.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. Okay, next item is discussion regarding proposed e-cigarette regulation. And Stuart, Ryan, I guess?
We coordinated our color today. Purple's a good color. Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, this had come up some months ago as the issue of e-cigarette usage increased. And with that happening, then, people were actually, of course, sitting at the computers and lighting up these e-cigarettes. And some people, well, the fact that they didn't even do it, of course, would mean they probably aren't going to be too happy if you go up to them and ask them to leave. And so consequently, that spurred this on, and that has caused some stress for the staff. And then it's mainly the people around them, too, that really didn't want to have this in their presence. So I approached Ryan, and we talked about the fact that maybe it should be considered something that you all address townwide. And so Nancy and I and my staff, Casey and Ted, we did some research, and we originally initially contacted the cities of Flagstaff, Glendale, Mesa, Peoria, Phoenix, Scottsdale, and Tucson. Of these cities, six filed the Arizona Revised Statute, the Smoke-Free Arizona Act, and have no ordinance dealing specifically with e-cigarettes. However, the city of Scottsdale is in the process of adding e-cigarette language to their ordinance, and that's been months, several months ago, and that may have already occurred, and we hadn't, you know, followed up to see. And then the folder, or the information you have, you have this information electronically that contains information relating to cities, towns, and counties that have already adopted the e-cigarettes. These include the town of Gilbert, the city of Glendale, and the city of Tempe. And then, of course, not too long ago, Yavapai County also created that, added that policy on. So, you know, it included a lot of the information that we found regarding this, and I think it's a very fluid situation. I think more and more counties, cities, and towns are, have already addressed it. So I don't know, Ryan, do you have anything to add?
Just what we've been talking about is very limited in nature. We're just talking about town-owned buildings, like the civic center, the library, where we have a lot of people coming in and out. Other cities have gone more extreme regulations, where they've tried to prohibit it anywhere in public spaces. It's not what we're talking about. We're just talking about town-owned buildings, mainly as a nuisance issue. So that's kind of where we wanted to start the discussion.
Any questions, anyone? I read through it. Gilbert, you had a really a nice outline there. Laura, you had a comment?
I have a very strong comment. I am so relieved to hear that we are going to address this. Two weeks ago, I was here in the library, and I couldn't stop sneezing, and I couldn't figure out what the heck was going on, people vaping. And I didn't connect the dots that day, but that weekend, I was in Phoenix with a family member who was vaping. I started sneezing like that again and put it all together. So while we don't maybe have documentation that this could be harmful, it annoys the heck out of me, and I can't imagine how many other citizens might be sensitive enough. And I'm just going to bluntly say, I can't stand the odor. Just the odor is unpleasant for me. So I want to give you my unqualified support.
Appreciate that. Good. Marty?
Yeah. Cigarette is a cigarette, and the appearance of somebody smoking in a library where there's children is just totally wrong. Not that long ago, I was at Stage Two, which is a very liberal stage production. The night I was there was the Improvantonians, which is all, you know, ad lib and, you know, and there was somebody in the audience smoking an e-cigarette, and they asked him to please stop smoking and put it away. So even in a very, you know, liberal environment, they're asking people to not smoke cigarettes. I think the image is wrong for a public building. I think if you're not allowed to smoke a regular cigarette, you shouldn't be allowed to smoke an e-cigarette. And as Lauralee said, you know, the odor from it could be very offensive to some people, and it's just the wrong image that we need to be putting out there. So I would support banning it from the library and any other public building.
Larry?
Yeah, the Mayor and Council, with your consent, we'll go ahead and put this on the next council meeting before it goes up in smoke.
Okay, good. Rick, had any comment?
Terrible, terrible. Fake smoke.
No comment. Mary?
No, I agree. I deal with it at work. I understand what you're saying.
Fair.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I think there's no facts yet as to the side effects of those, I guess, vaping tools, I don't know what you'd call it, e-cigarettes. And I think it's just prudent on our part to move forward until we know, and I think it's a good start to look at our public buildings, especially the library. So I definitely support that.
Rick?
Appreciate that.
Well, I'm initially bothered any time that we encroach on anybody's personal habits. It bothers me when we start dictating what people can and cannot do. However, in this country, we've decided that smoking cigarettes in public buildings should not be done. As a result of that, over the last few years, we've come to realize that we're better off without that. And my understanding with e-cigarettes is that there is nicotine involved in the e-cigarettes. That being the case, the nicotine was the issue that was used to ban cigarettes in public buildings, and I think therefore this falls into that same category, and it should be treated equally. So I think there's nothing else that we should do other than not allow them.
Good. I think, yes, everyone's, any other comments? Larry? You suggested bring it back soon, I don't know. Attorney hasn't had time to work out a proposal. He'll get it done. Steve, it's, just give him your hands.
I think it's a great idea.
Good. Thank you. Stuart, thank you, Ryan.
I want to comment. You look very nice today, Michael. I like your color.
Next item is Treatment Plant Equipment Storage Building, CIP number W-372. Neil?
All right. Well, good evening, and I just wanted to come before you tonight briefly, let you know that we're planning on putting a storage building down at the wastewater treatment plant. I know you have the information in your packets there, but I just wanted to run through it briefly, see if you had any questions or concerns about it. As you're aware, down at the treatment plant, we do have a lot of equipment down there, and generally, it stays inside. But last year, with the purchase of the new VAC truck that we have, and that's a really big truck, it stays outside all the time. And obviously, that's going to have, causes some problems with, you know, effects from the sun hitting the equipment, but also in terms of our response to sewer emergencies, in the middle of winter, if that truck is outside, in order for it to work properly, it's going to have, the water tanks are full of water, and the lines and stuff on it could freeze. And so we need to keep that inside and full of water so that when we do have an emergency come up, we can respond in a short amount of time and not have to worry then about filling the truck before we go out and those sorts of things. In addition to that, we also just purchased a large engine generator, emergency generator for the two pumping stations up by the tank farm, so that in the event of a long-term power outage, we still have the ability to transfer water from those tanks to the upper tanks, being the one on the side of Glassford Hill, what we call the Summit Tank, and the one up behind Home Depot, which is called the Granite View Tank. So we've got those two pieces of equipment, plus our old VAC truck, and we don't have, you know, a good place where we can keep all of that equipment. And so this new building, as you see on the slide that I'm showing you, we have an area called the drying beds, which we quit using quite a while ago for its real intended purpose, and we've started, we paved over it, and we've been using it for storage of materials and things like that, outside storage. We'd like to put the building in the southwest corner of that drying bed area, and essentially, it would be a large metal building. It would have three large bay doors on the south side for the trucks to enter and leave. We would also put three large doors on the north side, so essentially, you could drive through, you don't have to worry about backing up and that sort of thing. And we'd be able to store the equipment indoors. We have a budget in this, or we have money in this year's budget, about $80,000. Of that, we're actually proposing to use about $26,000 of it for design services for an architect, as well as for civil engineering and geotechnical sampling and so forth. And so the architect would be at Stro Architecture, and then we would do the civil work under Dave and Associates through their engineering agreement with us. So those are the two documents they'll be bringing to you next week to ask you to approve. And so I guess with that, I would answer any questions you might have.
Questions, anyone? Mary?
I don't have any questions. I just basically a comment, the fact that we've spent and invested so much into the infrastructure and to the equipment that we need to maintain the town. I absolutely agree that we need to take care of it and put it into a place that's going to keep it in good condition so we have it for future use, so it's a good idea.
Other questions? Is that going to be big enough for everything, Neil?
Is it going to be big enough?
Yeah.
I hope so. The plan is to put it inside, so.
Okay.
And then just so you're aware, even in the interim, it's not like the VAC truck is staying outside. We are keeping it inside, but it's inside at the water office down on Long Mesa, which means we don't have room in that building for other things as well. So we'd like to keep the uses, the sewer stuff away from the water stuff, but for right now, that during the winter, that's where it is being stored at nighttime. So we'll get it, be able to get it out of there and bring it down to the treatment plant.
Good. Any other questions? Okay, Neil, I think you're going to bring it back to us next week?
Next week, yes, sir.
Great. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got one more for you, Neil. Discussion regarding the purchase of a line-tapping machine, whatever that means. I guess I know what it means, is that right? I just don't know how it works.
And I can explain it to you, and that's what I intend to do. So, yeah, so the other item that we'll be bringing to you the next week, and I put this together very, very fast, and I'm going to point out this to you. I did not spell that right, but anyways.
What word did you get wrong? Was it hot or tap?
Machine, it's not spelled correctly.
Sheening. Machine?
That's correct.
We would have never noticed. We would have never noticed.
Machine, that's the sound of our money going out.
I'm not going to try and pronounce that either. All right, so a line-tapping machine or a hot-tapping tool. We have in our budget $38,000 to buy a new one. The one that we have and are using currently is 20 years old. It's pretty It's pretty much, pretty tired, and we need to get a new one. And so what they're used for is when we have a new customer service on water, and there is no service line in existence for them, we go out and we put a service line in for them, or we tap the main line for them to put a service in. Generally, we don't want to shut off, you know, two blocks or however big an area it might require of all the other businesses to do that, so we do it with the line live or in service with water running through it. And so in this slide, you see a water line down in the bottom of the trench, and there's a saddle over it, and then there's a valve sitting on it. If you take that saddle off of that line, you'll see the pipe is still 100% intact. It's not a broken line, and there's no hole in it or anything. So we clamp the saddle over the top of it. The saddle now seals watertight, and it's got a valve attached to that saddle. And then we're going to go in, and we're going to cut that pipe open with that valve on there. This is the machine that does that. So down at the bottom is the cutting tool itself, and the middle part actually bolts right onto the valve. So we bolt it onto the valve. As it's shown in here, just above the pipe, it bolts onto the valve. Valve, we open it all the way, and then you run the cutter right through the side of the pipe. When after it's made the cut, you back the cutting tool back out, and the, what we call the coupon, which is the piece of pipe now that's been cut out, in some cases it's six inches in diameter, eight inches in diameter, comes out with a cutting tool, and it goes beyond where the valve is, and then we shut the valve. At that point in time, we can then take the tool off because the valve is what's keeping the water from coming out. So in essence, that's what we're looking to buy. And like I said, we have a budget of $38,000 in our budget to purchase it. We've already received, we've received two bids on it. I can tell you it came in under our budget, but we will be bringing that back to you next week as well for approval. So I don't know if you have any questions or anything that I failed to answer on that? I'd be happy to address that.
Questions? Anyone? I think that's pretty clear. And I think we'll be glad to have it back. Good job, Neil.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we go on to number nine. Discussion regarding mid-year financial review for the town of Prescott Valley. Rick is happy to hear from you, Bill.
Wait, wait, wait. Neil, let's close my presentation. Cover slides. I didn't see any... I know this is what you're all waiting for.
When you speak of mid-year, you mean...
Best way to end your evening, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
A mid-year financial overview.
That means December 31st, right?
Yep. Doesn't get much better than this, right here. Let me tell you. So I do want to point out...
Rick is thrilled.
Do you see the very front slide here? In the past, I had a dollar sign with a slash through it, meaning that we didn't have any money. So I'm changing the theme this year to we're going to try to save money. We want to add money to our fund balances, our cash reserve. So this is our new theme.
Pretty fast.
My little piggy bank. Only one coin going into it right now, but it's a start, all right? Still good, there's no coin.
And you spelled every word correct, if I might add.
All the numbers, I really focus more on numbers than words, so that's my only thing. So again, every year, probably for the last, I don't know, 10 years, I think I've been coming before council, just to give you a mid-year update. And what I'm doing is I'm just kind of giving you a snapshot, like the mayor said, as of 12/31 for last month versus a year ago for the first six months of the previous year. So it just kind of gives us a good idea of where we are compared to budget. And I'm only focusing on revenues and expenditures at this point. And my primary focus will be on the general fund, too.
Are you smiling?
It's early yet.
It's only February.
It's early. You know, ask me in June, maybe I'll tell you then. This slide right here shows total revenues, general fund revenues by the major categories. Now, anything, if you look over to far right, percent remaining, anything that is greater than or less than 50% is good. Now, you notice that taxes, it's about 51%. That one's a little bit misleading because that only reflects five months' worth of collections. And actually, the next slide I have will show you that we actually anticipate that we're going to do pretty well this year. I think we're going to actually exceed our budget. So that one's a little bit misleading, so don't focus on that one too much. Just like intergovernmental or other large revenue, that's where state shared revenues are. Our state sales tax that we collect, that's also only on a five months. So if I had six months of data or revenues collected, I think in both of those categories, we would be ahead of our budget. So I really don't have any major concerns in our major revenue categories. The only one I'm kind of tracking a little bit is our fines and forfeitures. We're a little bit behind budget on that one. I think there's some timing issues with some money coming in from the courts, so we're going to be tracking that one, and hopefully that one will kind of level out as the year goes on. But at this point, that's about really the only main category in the general fund that I have any concerns about. So overall, I think the general fund is doing pretty well as it compares revenues to budget. Now, this slide shows our sales tax collection for just the general fund, and it's a 10-year period of time. From 2006 to '14, that's actual numbers.
Oh, my gosh.
So you can see what we're projecting. Actually, I'm going to project this year, and it will hopefully materialize, but I'm projecting about $13.6 million, which will be the largest amount that we've ever collected in our history. So we always say, we always use 2007 as our, you know, benchmark. Someday, we hope to get there, someday we hope to get there. And this year, I do believe we're going to get there. Well, not there yet. A year from now, then I can say that we made it. One of the other main, I think one important points is, in 2007, it was about $12.6 million, I think, in collections. Our retail was 39% of our total revenues. Construction was 31%. Now, this year, I'm projecting our retail to be 61%. So we transitioned from, you know, relying, and construction is a one-time revenue, so we kind of, you know, moved away from relying on that one-time sales tax revenues to support, basically, services. Now, we're really, 61% of our total revenues coming from retail, and we're still continuing to see that grow. You know, that's a, it's a good transition to see, and hopefully it'll continue. And the only point, for some reason, you know, our construction is still down. We're still monitoring construction, even though it's, in some ways, it's good that we, you know, it's not a huge number that we're relying on there. It's still over $1 million, but it's not, nothing like it was back in '07, when it was like $4.5 million or something. But construction is a little bit down, even though permits are up. We just haven't seen that money, you know, once a house is built, they sell it, then we get the construction money. We just haven't quite seen that money come in yet. State shared revenues, again, you can see this year, it's going to be pretty equal to what we collected last year, which is pretty much on target with what the budget is. The only concern I really have is for next year. You know, even though we're not talking about next fiscal year, even though we just started the budget process, our state share revenues for next fiscal year are just really unknown right now. I'm forecasting a 2% increase. I'm just not sure if that's going to happen next year. So another 30 to 60 days, hopefully we'll find out, or get some better numbers of where our state share revenues are going. Here's our permits. Again, I don't think we'll ever see 2006 again. You know, Richard, if Richard was here, maybe he would say that he hopes that maybe those days will be coming, but I'm not sure 2006, if trying to maintain that type of growth is really something that's, you know, achievable anyway for infrastructure and everything else that has to be put in place. So, but right now, we have for six months, we have 205 permits being issued. Last year, we had 366, so we'll probably be slightly ahead of that number. But it's, you know, hopefully that growth will continue to occur, and maybe a little bit more. We could see, you know, there's some impact fees related projects that we could use this money for, so we're looking for a little bit higher growth numbers in this area. But right now, this year, we're probably be in the 400 to 450 range for permits issued. Now, this is expenditures by main categories for general fund only. Now, 50%, anything in the percent remaining column, anything over 50% is good. If you see the total, the very bottom line total expenditures, we spent 50% of our budget. So we are right on target. I really have no, there's a couple areas up there that are below 50%, but a lot of those categories have had large one-time expenditures, like maintenance. Casey spends a lot of money on maintenance fees at the beginning of the year. So that's, I'm not really concerned about any category right now at this point. There's a couple we'll continue to monitor, but I don't see any major issues at this point, other than it does look like we're going to spend all of our money that's been budgeted. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but good. This is the one by department. Same numbers, basically, we're just showing it by department. Now, there's only two departments that are below 50%. One of them I have no concerns with whatsoever, town council. So, but that one is basically, again, there's a lot of membership fees that you pay at the beginning of the year. NA-COG, League of Cities and that. So that's a large number that comes out of your budget at the beginning of the year, so I don't have any issues there. Now, the one I do have a little bit of concern at this point is non-departmental. This is where we budget all of our development agreements. Some of the development agreements, some of the monies that I've budgeted, it looks like I'm going to be a little bit short. So I think that there's a good chance that in this line item, that we may actually go in the red. Part of that is sales tax reimbursement agreements. Because we're doing so well in a lot of our sales tax areas that primarily are in development agreements, then basically I'm going to have to, basically I'm going to fall short in our, probably our appropriation side. Not sure how much yet, but we're going to have to kind of keep an eye on that. But on a positive side, you know, we have collected more revenues, we have more money that we've collected, so then as a result, then we have to also pay out a little bit more.
Yeah, I do understand, the further we go in the red in that category, the better off we are. That means we have brought in that much more revenue, and this is just the percentage sharing per development agreements.
This is our HERF account, again, on the HERF user revenues. It's only for five months. Right now, actually, based on our current projections, I'm looking at, will probably be around $200,000 over budget. So we're actually going to collect more money than what I currently have budgeted at this time. Expenses are really right on target at this point. I know Norman would like to spend more money on chip seal and ACO overlay, but we're going to forecast, I'll put that in next year's budget. But overall, right now, I see HERF actually doing very well at this point, so I don't see any concerns with the HERF fund right now. Here's our state share revenue, or our HERF revenues over the last 10 years. Again, 2015 is projected as slight increase over the previous year. Again, next year is our concern. You know, there's some talk about monies being taken from HERF to fund different areas, DPS or other areas, so we just really don't know where HERF is going to end up for next fiscal year. So we do have, I mean, if you go back to the previous, my previous slide, you can see at the, actually, I'm sorry, on this one, I don't have it. There's, we're actually still showing a surplus, so we're going to probably have $2,000, $2.5 million worth of fund balance in a HERF fund that will be available for budgeting purposes next year if we have to, even if we have a downturn in our HERF revenues. Here's our impact fees of money collected. This is the one I'm probably the most concerned about. Right now, we will probably project, by the end of this year, we'll probably project a little bit more than 2014. But even that, I'll probably be 50% of my budget. So, you know, I am, right now, I'm probably 50% behind of where I thought we would be at this time of the year, so. We've only collected 25% of what I've budgeted. So at six months into the year, I was hoping to be a little bit further ahead than that. So again, we'll continue to look at it, but I don't anticipate that we'll ever reach our budgeted numbers this year at this point. Wastewater fund. Next two slides will be about the utility funds. User fees, basically what we send out to utility customers. Right now, this year, we will probably reach, I think we'll hit the 4.7 million or be just slightly ahead of 4.7 million. Capacity fees, I think we'll be a little bit behind. Again, that kind of follows the same trend of where we are in impact fees. Impact fees are behind typically, water wastewater connection charges are also behind. So we'll be a little bit low on capacity, but all of the expenditures at this point, I don't see any issues. Everything seems to be right and target with budget. And again, the wastewater fund has a very strong fund balance. In the next couple, we're starting to work on our water sewer rate study, so sometime in June, I'll come before you and give you an overview of where we are. But we'll show you that we're in pretty good financial shape for the water wastewater Here's the water side. The one is the user fees, 4.1 million, budget 7.9 or almost 8 million. Even though it looks like, if you just kind of double the number, it looks like we should be ahead of budget. Probably going to fall a little bit short because this first quarter, January, February, March, are typically the months where we have the least amount of revenues collected because of just the winter months. So I'm not sure we're going to hit 7.9 million this year. Something we'll be looking at, again, this will take this information into consideration while we're doing our water sewer rate model. Also, water and capacity fees, we're probably going to be, you can see, we're probably going to be below there, too, at this point. So even with that, though, we'll probably still be ahead in our total revenues, will still be probably exceeded expenditures that are shown here, so I think we'll still end up pretty good in the water fund. Total debt for all of our funds, $77 million right now. Last year, we were $91 million. So, you know, it's coming down. We're actually talking with WIFA right now, actually, that about trying to pay down some of the WIFA loans. And the last number I received is that we should save a little over half a million dollars if we pay down some of the WIFA loans. So we may be looking at doing that in the next couple months. So again, the number is going in the right direction, I feel, so it's all positive. You can see $174,000 for special assessments. That one's basically gone because we just paid it off. Here's a breakdown of the different funds or a different bond. You can see all the refunding under the MPC. The first one's a police building in the Civic Center, actually. That one will be done in 2018, so that'll be nice. 2011 is the streets, the bonds that we issued for all of the street construction, Navajo, Robert Road. It says impact fees and third of a cent. This year was the last year we could use impact fees to apply toward that debt. So next, going future years, everything will be a third of a cent. So it's going to be taking a little bit of our money away for future road construction projects to be applied toward this debt. So, and then the 2012, that's actually the Big Chino project, and that's where we're really using, actually, I'm sorry, that was an old sewer bonds, and we're using wastewater money, user fees actually, to pay that one. So that one doesn't hit the general fund at all. Now, the one in the 2012B, that's the Big Chino money. It says water resource, and then basically if water resource fees aren't enough, then the general fund has a backstop. So the general fund has been contributing toward this one. And then you can see the rest of them. Library buildings primarily between cultural impact fees and the general fund at this And last one is some of the major projects that we have going on, and then how much we've spent to date. Some of the projects, you know, Capital Improvement Fund, Viewpoint Connector, Lake Shore Drive, you know, some of those will be starting here in the... you know, some of those will be starting here in the next couple of months and that, so. But with that, all this answer.
Rick, any questions? Anyone else? Larry, you got a comment?
Well, just a comment that Bill just touched on and touched on barely, and that was special assessment fees. He said, and I think it deserves repeating, we just paid off the sewer bonds. Okay, we're talking about the bonds that were issued, that in many people's opinion, myself included, the, the one thing that we did during the course of the building of the Town of Prescott Valley was putting in the centralized wastewater treatment plant, the sewer lines, the elimination of 7,000 septic tanks, and the paving of all of the roads in Prescott Valley. When that was completed, is when you saw the Town of Prescott Valley take off and become a desirable place for many people to relocate. And that was the one thing that I believe the mayor and town council, back in the very early 90s, and Mayor Scoog, you were on council at that point in time, the single most important thing in the history of this town was the issuance of those bonds and making those improvements. And it's now paid off.
That was also one of the single biggest headaches.
It was.
In my life. Any other questions?
Not the sewer?
Sewer was. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I had a, just a question, and that was, what's the issue with the state shared revenue next year? It's just the fact that they may use those funds differently than they have in the past?
Well, I don't know, there's, there's, part of it is, there's a deficit. There's a deficit right now. So they have limited resources, so they always want to try to take resources from one area to give to another area, you know, so that's where the battle always begins. HERF, again, another area because of DPS, some other areas that need more money, so they feel, they only have certain revenue streams that they can really take money from, so it's always, it seems like every couple of years, we seem to go through this process of the state trying to grab money from the towns and cities to fund other, other areas, other line items in the state budget.
So we may know by the end of the legislature session?
We'll probably know sooner than that, yeah. For, the final numbers will definitely be out by then, but typically, probably by the beginning of March, I'll probably have a pretty good idea what direction or we'll be heading for next fiscal year. I hope so, because we have our, you know, middle of March, I have to start getting, trying to put a budget together for council to review, so I'm hoping to have some decent numbers by then.
And those impact fees, are they related more to development, construction than anything else?
It's all construction related. It's all single-family homes being built. Yep, it's all directly related.
So that could change, we never know.
Mary, you got a comment?
Yeah, you know, I just want to say that I know that Kirk and I appreciate very much all of what you've done in the years before we even knew Prescott Valley existed, because what you've built here is an amazing place to live, and I enjoy the benefits of it every day. And I just really want the council to know that that was here. Done a great job. It's a great town, a great community, and it's only going to get better as we move forward. And, you know, you build things, it costs money, costs money to maintain the things that you've built, and that's just all part of life. But you've done a great job, and many of us, about 44,000 people today, appreciate and benefit from all the hard work of the people that were here that most of us will never know. So I just want to really thank you.
Well, thank you, Mary. Any other comments? Bill, I think you've done a great job, and we appreciate the competition.
I'll be back in a few more months.
You will?
With more money.
Promise?
No.
Great, we'll look forward to hearing from you, Bill, and Richard, Rick is always excited about it.
I know, he is.
Highlight of my year.
Highlight of his day.
I know. I can drop a copy off at home if you want, all right?
Okay. Any other comments? No final comments, Larry? Anything else, Bill? Okay, we have one final item, and that is, meeting is adjourned. And thank you for a good job, we appreciate that.